Welcome to the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners Special Meeting September twenty fourth, twenty, excuse me, September twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two. Are in place, stand for the pledge. Melburn, you lead us in the pledge, please.
This is the United States of America, the Republic of America. Foundation, that, who has a role, leading justice for all.
Item three, roll call of board members, please.
Buckett Fowler.
Here.
Milburn. Schneider.
Here.
Baldwin.
UP, UP.
Russo.
Item number four, approval of the agenda, please. Motion made by Commissioner Milburn, seconded by Commissioner Russo to approve the agenda. Any further discussion from, regards to the agenda from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Schneider.
Yes.
Buckett Fowler.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Item five, public comment, agenda items only. Okay. Item number six, new business, Roscommon County Juvenile Detention Center, possible closure. Okay. We're here. Now, I don't know how we're gonna, how we're gonna, I guess I'll turn, I guess I'll have Jody explain the paper she gave us here, so we can kind of go through this thing, okay?
Right, so my purpose is really to give you the financial information that I have. And then I think that Cheryl and Michael and Mr. Kleeny can provide you with insight of how the center itself has been operating the last couple of years, and then where the trends and future of youth placement for adjudicated youth, and almost adjudicated youth, is, is heading, to give you a full picture in order to make a decision of how you'd like to proceed. So, really, the first sheet is not the one that we need to look at, except for the bottom. So I gave you a couple of different things. The first page, it looks like this.
That's the first one.
I think. What I'll have you do is actually, if you start at the bottom, where we are trending currently for two thousand and twenty-two, is we're looking at potential anticipated revenues, probably about four hundred and five thousand, and anticipated expenses for the year end of five hundred and ten thousand, which of course will leave us a negative net year end of one hundred and five thousand. You have the specific numbers on there, I'm just rounding out. Those financial assumptions actually do assume that we are able to hire two additional part-time staff, and that we would continue to house the budgeted average of four youth per day. So, and those are assumptions, and maybe vast assumptions as we sit here and we talk about this. I did provide you with a current budget of revenue and expenditure report for juvenile detention. I will caveat everything that I say, that we have talked about this off and on since COVID. We knew that juvenile detention hit a major hurdle. We have always had problems staffing in juvenile detention, not bringing people in initially, but keeping people, because it is a, it's a hard job. It is a thankless job. It is one where you're extremely restricted in what you can and cannot do. And I think that we've had a lot of people come through the doors that were going to make a difference, or wanted to make a difference, and thought they were going to be able to do more social work, more, more of those types of activities. And then they get in there and they realize that's not what their role is, that they are a juvenile corrections officer, in essence, without the ability to do any real control of behaviors aside from lock and wait. And it's just been, it's been hard on all of you guys. Cheryl, and Michael, and Joanne have been the significant force behind juvenile detention, making it twenty years at this point. They have met with me and talked about their concerns, the ones that aren't just fiscal. Where we sit right now is the last, the last go-round of applicants, I think was just kind of a crushing blow, where we had three. Cheryl scheduled interviews for all three. One of three showed up to the interview and was not a candidate that would be able to work in that setting, because they had a disability that would make them unable to do the major job functions. Obviously, there's a lot of site required for checks, visuals, et cetera, things like that. So there were some definite, definite issues, and I think that was when Cheryl came in and said, I, I don't know what we do, because at this point, they are losing one very good part-time employee, which puts them in the position of not having enough people at the end of this month to run twenty-four-hour operations, not without you guys working twenty-four-seven every day, every month, and that's not going to be feasible nor happen, and increases your expensive, expenses whole throat. So I guess what I would ask is Cheryl and Mike, if you guys can kind of chime in on the things that you know, you've seen, and then Jake, if you can give kind of a trend of, because part of our problem is we have different youths than we did twenty years ago coming through. And that's where they have that information for you to understand and try to make a decision with as well. So, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Mike, can?
So the, I'll start with the, the youth. The, the notion that we can't get youth in the building is, is not true. We could be full twenty-four-seven. The problem is, there are kids that we can't control with the staff we have. They're out of control, to say the least, mental health. Most of the kids, I mean, we've got three right now that are mental health kids that have never been in the system and went unchecked. So, we, you know, with the state's restrictions on restraints and what you can and can't do, it just makes it an impossible situation. And to pay people, you know, starting at fourteen dollars an hour, when they can make more at Subway or McDonald's and not have to risk injury every day, you just can't get people to do it. So we, we definitely, our phone rings off the hook nonstop, I just don't have the staff to control these kids, without personally me being in the building twenty-four-seven, or tying up the sheriff's department, which the last one was a three-hour ordeal, and it took me and four deputies for three hours. And that was time that those deputies weren't on the road. So, I don't think that's the plan, that anybody wants to go. So that, that's the main issue, is just getting people in the door to work with the type of kids we have. When we started, it was, you know, marijuana use, petty theft, that type of stuff, where they'd be in there for a week and on their way, and the amount of mental health cases that we had were few and far between, and now it's just, with every, all the other facilities closing, and mental health facilities closing, it's just, it's a nightmare. Well, that's kind of the, really the root of the problem.
Staffing, we are actually three staffed. Like Jody said, probably beginning of October, I think we're gonna lose that third person. But we lost a full-time person, we're not able to build that position, or the other one that just haven't had any other, had one from, because I placed an ad in the resorder, had one email from a gentleman, seemed like an older gentleman, wanting to talk to me about, to see if he would think that he might like this. It already, after this, so I have not. And it wouldn't surprise me to lose other people, it really wouldn't. Finances?
So we have sat down, and Cheryl and Mike have talked about, like, okay, what if you paid everybody, you know, twenty dollars an hour, and we created more full-time positions, what does that look like? If you've got four kids, because really, if you build all of yourselves, you'd need much more staff than you have, based on, and we, what is your current rate that you charge per day right now? We would be looking at increasing those rates just for those first thirty days to like three hundred and seventy-nine dollars a day, just to cover what we would need to cover in wages. And I'm gonna guess that Jake can probably tell us, nobody's gonna pay that. Okay.
Hey, Mike. Closing for quite the same issue.
Oh, turn the mic on.
Staffing has been an issue, you know, it, since COVID. Every single one of my service providers in the childcare fund has raised their rates this year. Any single one of my service is by over a hundred. So, simple economics of supply and demand. Of supply, demand goes through. Our detention center is one of the, who is not the only one in the entire state that accepts children. Today, and spoke to people, probably Taylor, and they, and the efforts our detention center has, and said, hey, is this true? I've been told at that time. Pretty sad about it. I can't recommend from a service perspective for our youth in the community. However, I also can't fix the staffing. I'm in a little bit of a inside here, where it's a service that, that's our you. I think the right people are here. Personally. And so with being able to get staffing, that's the main reason that most Okay. I will say that the tenor of the state at this time is to have more and in residential placements. So there is that coming down the pipe, too, with two pounds, just reform. I don't know what that looks like in five years from now, for the next year.
Okay, I think Mike, one of the things he alluded to, and three to four of us sitting here weren't here twenty years ago, but it was, I think, the intent, if I remember reading the papers correctly, the reason, the intent of the detention center was, is to take these people, like you said, with marijuana or behavior issues, but they were a lot more minor, plus to help out schools. They were having behavioral problems, and we brought them in here, and they were, like you said, they were here for a week or two. They were here for a month, that was the longest. So, we've gotten to the point now, that like you say, we're, we're getting youth that are beyond, unfortunately, beyond repair maybe, but at the same time, we have to house them, if we agree to take them. But you have to go through a screening process to find out what their history is, and to find out if you can even handle that particular youth. You try to do that, but they try to send them to you anyway. Right? So, it comes down to the dollars and cents. And you're looking at a twenty-four-seven operation, you either, you either decide to stay open, or you decide to close it, there's no in-between. You can't staff it, and you're understaffed. I'm concerned for the safety of the people that are working there, because that's a safety concern, as far as I'm concerned, so. Mr. Milburn.
I appreciate you guys being here today. You've given me a glimmer of hope, you said they might. Said also tremendous loss. The rate is one ninety, you said three seventy-nine, we'd have to bump it up to?
Potentially, that's kind of our
If, if we were, I, I need a glimmer of hope here. I don't want to see people lose jobs. I also realize we provide a service here that's very, very much needed for our community. You guys have done an admirable job for the last twenty years. If, if we would raise the rates to three seventy-nine, and do some other creative things, bump up the staff maybe to a hypothetical, I'm just using twenty dollars, because it was tossed out, would we have the potentiality to continue this juvenile center open? Because we got a lot of money in building that facility, we have an outstanding reputation, and since we're the only one in the state that takes juvenile youth outside of our county, we provide a unique service, a very unique service. If you had your, your magic ball, how could we keep this facility open under, if you had?
You gotta pay people, I mean, that's not a secret. And I'm not complaining about our pay, but when you look at other facilities, they're starting off with Cheryl and I make, as just an entry-level employee, with benefits, with retirement and all that. So I mean, that's, you know, that's a kind of competition for employees, if they want to get into this field, do I want to make fourteen dollars an hour and work part-time, or drive an hour to Bay City or Midland and get, you know, fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year? And that's not with a degree, that's just entry-level employees off the street, so.
Oh, we got, we got, we got one other thing that we need to discuss here, and Bill's here from maintenance, because I know that that's an old building. It's got some issues going forward. I think it's something that has to be considered in the equate, in the equation, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know, Billy, you have anything to add as far as from building ground, or maintenance, please?
Well, had a hundred and eighteen I had man hours. Can't say that they were all juvenile dependent. Break it out that way, that I go in the future. Before, our hourly rate's about thirty bucks an hour, so place the two year over there, as a month, there's, there are totals, seven thousand, one hundred dollars. I am supposed to replace the rooftop units over there. And probably looking at a twenty-five for a roof. I should over there, up here. Utility bills are gonna obviously increase, but and they, if we, I would I guess pretty bad, our full load test, so we pretty significant. Actually, if you fast, what I'm looking at, think if we replace doors, we're all free, more about them, even like that, build back to the company. And versus true, what we don't Obviously, there's a lot of giving you a lot of information. Like I said, I won't even give you the facts, and I think I probably will also have to look into.
All right, well, I look at, I look at Jake, Mike, and Cheryl is knowing a lot more about this than I do, and the undershift just walked in, so I'm gonna bring him up. So, I'll kind of fill him in. From the law enforcement side, your thoughts on the detention center, and what it's costing the sheriff's department? I guess I'll refer to the number of incidents that you may get called in on. Would that be right, saying the same, Mike?
I don't know what I have to add, or what's been said so far.
I, I understand you're in here, this is a cold call.
I don't have any earth shattering that you don't want to know, I have concerns with the fact that, what are we going to do with our youth? It's a, it's a problem all over the state that I hear on the right. I understand it's also a financial burden, but it's also an employer in our community that employs good people, so you're in a really bad situation, we're trying to figure out how do we control this? I, I think it's a problem that every county's gonna continue with, and it's gonna continue worse over time, because I doubt that the state this. So, in one way or another, I think that the board, whether it's this board or the company, board coming in, is gonna have to figure out, what are we going to do? I mean, to do, because I don't think the state's coming in to save the day.
Okay. Um, I was at the Mac Conference down the port here on Monday and Tuesday, and I did run into, I didn't, I forgot to, to tell Jody about this one. I don't know if I even told Dave, but anyway, Jody does know about this, Clara's looking at possibly putting in a juvenile detention center, apparently there's a building down there, and they're looking at maybe, I'm gonna say two hundred or two hundred and forty youth. Well, that's not gonna happen. But Lake County is looking at going, have you heard anything about that one? Have you heard about that one? Lake County is looking at, apparently there's, in, in Baldwin, there's two, two prisons. One is a state one, and one is a private one. Apparently, the private one is looking at bringing in youth there.
So the county
I did, I did tell them that please let us know what's going on, so.
The county is looking for partners in that, and I don't know that they're gonna get any.
Right.
I talked to Wexford and Osceola, and they're not interested, they just don't, Wexford, they even talked about something with Grand Travers, but they're not really interested Lake, because they feel like they're gonna pay their, more than their end of the burden, so.
Right, I just said, we were in, we were, be interested, I did, knowing that, that, that money was gonna be the problem, because I knew that they can't do this on their own. It'd be just like us trying to do what we're trying to do on our own.
I guess the only, only thing that I'd like to add, that I would like you guys to, the commissioners, to, to think about in their decision-making process as well, is, it's not just a residential crisis in the state of Michigan right now. We have a crisis with psychologists and psychiatrists as well. So if we're thinking about this on the long term, and saying, these youth that we are getting services through a detention center here, we're okay on outside with services, the entire state is not. Grand Travers, they were just saying, through CMH yesterday, has a facility, a mental health facility with beds, and I think they have twenty beds specifically for youth. They can't fill any of them, because they cannot get a psychiatrist. So if we're talking about this in the grand scheme of juvenile justice and how we serve our youth, the services on the outside aren't there, they're just not. And so I do think that that's something that's important for the for you all to take a, to take a thought of, when you think about closing this structure, is if, if we're in a situation where we have all of this stuff on the outside to take care of this, and we have counseling services and all this kind of stuff in place in our community, we do have some, but it's paltry compared to what our need is at this point in time.
David, anything to add?
No, I I, I don't want to say close, you know, but after listening to everyone today and talking with you and Jody.
Like you said, if you push it up to three hundred and eighty dollars a day, they may be willing to pay it, but do we have the people to work? They'll, they'll pay the money, bring the kid here, but we've got nobody to watch him.
We're still
That's our problem.
That's the problem, yeah.
Pay twenty bucks an hour, how soon are you gonna get these people in here? Or are you going to get these people in here? That's the other question. It's a great idea, it looks good on paper, but to try and put it to use is another situation.
Not a magic one.
Yeah.
So, um.
Karen.
Yes, sir.
You know, I, I, I'm unsure if you didn't hear what I had to say before, but it kind of piggybacked off, one, one of the things that I'm sure, I said, what are we gonna do with our youth? You mentioned serve our youth. We have a responsibility to these, to these kids. It shouldn't always be about money, I know money drives, the, the money's the driver, but it shouldn't always be about money. We have a service that we need to provide, it's, it's imperative that we provide services for these kids, and for our community at large. If we can bump it up to three seventy-nine and pay twenty dollars an hour, with the potentiality of keeping our facility open, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of that. I'm in favor of that, I don't want to just see us close, because it seems maybe the easier course. I'm not saying that it's easy, I'm not trying to belittle or promote or admonish anybody. At the end of the day, if, if we have a potentiality of keeping our facility open and raising to the three seventy-nine that was suggested, and paying possibly twenty dollars, I'm just throwing some numbers out. Twenty dollars an hour, I'm in favor of trying to keep it open. We have a responsibility, that's what the government's job, I've worked for the government my whole entire life, we have a responsibility to do that. Is that, is that a potential, is that possible for us to do that?
Well, I need to interrupt for just a second, because we need to clarify just a couple of different fiscal things. On average, Jake, how many of Roscommon County youths do you place a month?
Just gonna bring that up.
Thank you.
I don't have that specific figure. I can say it's probably under five, I think would be a fair assessment.
We're, we're primarily, and correct me if I'm wrong, on a little bit of the history back here, because I do sit on that committee, Ken's the chair, and I'm the vice chair of that committee, but we predominantly have out-of-county youth in that, that facility, and I would guess that right now, if you have, you have three in there right now, four in there right now, and I would probably guess that none of them are from Roscommon County, am I correct? But we're, we're, we're running a detention center for other counties. We're not, in essence, running a detention center for Roscommon County youth at this time.
And I, and I appreciate the clarification, I didn't know that, I kept thinking it was pretty much just our kids.
And I guess, I guess my thought to that is, I know that twenty years ago, we were able, we were able to do that. And that's where kind of that trending of placements and how things operate. You know, I think there was more twenty years ago, based on all the conversations I've had with everybody. You were getting more more stick, less carrot, and now it's more carrot, less stick. So we, we needed, I mean, you guys could easily, twenty years ago, have a houseful every month of Roscommon County youth. Short-term stays, it was and of course, now those trends have changed.
Well, I think over time, at one time, I can remember, not that long ago, four or five years ago, our capacity was eight, right? We were at eight, and we were turning people away. Okay? And at that particular time, the detention center was making money. And we didn't get tore up, they weren't tearing things up, the youth we were getting weren't tearing the building up. Now, the building's that much older, so that's consideration of Bill's talking about with maintenance. We're down to four, I read, and I understand, knowing the history of it, August and September, are you, are you gonna be your lighter months, because that's where the schools look at it for their count, you know? You know, you're playing a game, but that's beside the point. But now we're at the point that you're not turning them away anymore. We're not at that point. We were at eight, which was our capacity, at one time, we're looking at expanding and going into girls. Yeah, that didn't work out. I guess right then, that's when the model started to change, really. That it wasn't sustainable, and then we've just progressed to the point now, we're down to two or three or four, and they're not even Roscommon County youth. When it was first set up twenty years ago, it was set up through the judges at that time, I'm gonna, I can't remember exactly. Dawson? That was advocating for it? Bumgarner.
Bumgarner to the Dawson, it was appropriated, so.
But okay. But
It was Bumgarner.
Right, right, but it, the model has changed, like Jake has said, I mean, Jake's sitting there, I, I agree, he's right in the middle on this thing, there's a need, Mark, I agree, there's a need, but financially, I think it's, I think unfortunately, I think it's inevitable what we have to do here.
So you guys are stuck, the board commissioners, in a position right now, this is your crossroads period, and I know that three of you, one who is not here, but I have talked to Commissioner Milburn on the telephone about all of this, you're, you're turning out, you're leaving, you're ditching us, but but you are well aware that we have preached and we have talked. We knew that rising expenses with flat revenues, and an increase in the demand on services, was going to put us in the position that we're at right now, which is next year's budget, budget will include closures of non-statutory or non-mandated departments. This is our first, we don't have any money to assist, we used a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of American Rescue Plan funding for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, we used um, twenty twenty-one, we used another hundred and seventy thousand of American Rescue Plan money, um, to offset the losses. But we, we knew, we knew that we were taking losses, um, especially twenty twenty, we were just completely closed down, um. Sorry, I'm getting emotional, um, so you, you don't have a hundred and five thousand, we don't, we don't have the money to continue to do this with. Um, nor should you be taking general fund Ross Common County taxpayer dollars to take losses for youth outside of Ross Common County. You know, we haven't had a lot of town halls yet on the restoration, but at those we have, um, they wanna know, they wanna know what we're taking care of inside. Now, I don't know, um, in conversations that you can have with the staff here, um, what a temporary closure would look like. I know you guys are, you're done with being able to run a schedule basically when. Okay, um, and put a temporary closure in place at that point, and maybe we sit down with a subcommittee and figure out, okay, in thirty days, what, what really do we have to see happen? Could we be staffed again by January first? Um, that being said, um, we do have three current full-time employees and two part-time, or part-time, um, that you'll have to make decisions staffing-wise, do you keep the three full, three full-time on, um, in order to do whatever needs to be done, um, lay your part-time people off, which would probably be, be a gander of where you'd be going, and obviously, we're gonna pay for that. I mean, that's, nobody coming in equals no money, um. And then regroup and see if that's something we can pull into place on January first. Um, at the same time, that also puts our employees in the position of, if there is a open county position to apply for, um, or a position elsewhere, are they gonna hold out hope here versus going for the secure job, or, um, you know, are you going to simply say, hey, look, I've got a full-time job offer in a, in an area where it's secure? Um, so I, those are kind of all caveats, so I don't know if you want to consider, consider the first week of October, like October first or whatever that date is, uh, temporary thirty-day closure to review. Um, lay off your part-time staff, keep your full-time employees active and involved in some areas. Um, or at least your director and your assistant director, so we can see if there is a longer-term solution. Um, and that'll involve obviously reaching out to other counties, um, but again, at the same time. Yeah, Mr.-
I don't, I don't, I don't know if we can afford that. Here's, here's the second mark. Mike and Cheryl have done one heck of a fabulous job to run this center. I'm very appreciative personally, well, you and, you know, Jake has come in and he's, he's kinda been on, on the fly, but he's been very upfront and professional about this whole thing. So I commend everybody, but the thing you have to understand is, is whether it's a temporary closure or it's a permanent closure, there's gonna be expenses to a closure or a temporary closure, okay? But if you, if, if it's temporary closure and we end up closing, it was just gonna cost us more money. So I just, I'm just throwing it out there because I know how that stuff works. Um, you either step up to the plate and take care of it now, or you throw it down the road, but if you throw it down the road, it's gonna cost more money. And it's gonna cost more headache, and then you have to have, and then I really think, and Mike and Cheryl, because you're in front of me, I had to list the other employees too. This isn't easy thing to do for anybody. But at the same time, this could be, whether it's yourself, you have to have an opportunity to get something else, and if you've got something that's gonna be more stable than this is gonna be, you're gonna go. Right? Because you gotta take care of yourself, and all those employees are the same way. Um, I think we're, you're gonna throw a Band-Aid on, that's gonna cost, keep costing us money.
I'm gonna go with, with the controller's recommendation. I, I like what she's just-
I don't think she made a recommendation.
I, I believe she did.
No, you make the recommendation.
Yeah, it was a, just an idea.
Recommendation.
Yeah, I don't get about-
Idea.
Well, I'll go with an idea. I like her idea. I like, I like that idea that, that the controller tossed out, because it gives us an opportunity to review, make a decision based on the facts, is, is presented and after review. It does give a glimmer of hope to keep the facility open, maybe as, as been pointed out, we could raise the rate to three seventy-five. There is a possibility of keeping it open. I like, I like Jody's idea of, of what she just recommended. What's the recommendation?
No, it's your recommendation.
My recommendation, the, of her idea.
Like I said, that's a fine idea. Um, but the building's not getting any better. We know we gotta keep bumping money into that baby all the time. We know right now that we can't get staff. Even if we go to three eighty, twenty bucks an hour, we have no idea if that's even gonna work.
Not gonna, that's not gonna happen.
Cost us money regardless. And like I said, if you go for thirty-day closure to try and get, or try and maintain the staff that we have, you know, myself, I'd be out looking for another job. I'd probably be out looking for a job right now, because you know, it's slowly going downhill. Um, so.
Correct, I mean, I would be too.
Just, I, I just wanna, we talk about when things changed, it, it was COVID, there's no, no secret. Uh, everything changed, staffing, like Jake said, across the state, we talked to every facility weekly. It updates on what the door, I mean, Ottawa, Cat County is probably the biggest, probably the biggest county-run facility right now, and they were operating at six beds because of staff. And I think there were sixty-eight beds. So, you know, there's that many kids in the system, and they've always taken kids out of county. And when that shuts down and you have Jackson and, uh, McComb and Bay and Saginaw and Midland are usually our court's backup when we were folks, they're not Sioux tribe, they're not taking out the kind of kids because they can't staff what they have, so, uh, it's a, it's across the state, uh, and the difference is, and I'm not advocating for this at all, but their millage ran. Uh, you know, we take the money solely off what we bring in as far as kids, so those facilities are probably gonna be in crunch time, but they're also running on millages, so all that works for their, I think we are the only one under this model where we just make the money off of the county that we're housing for the kid. So, uh, when the COVID started and the governor said, you know, put the the resolutions out there that only these violent kids can get locked up, well, it kinda ran us out because we're not taking those kids. And, you know, we didn't feel that that was safe for our staff at the time, when we, when we had more staff. Um, and we, you know, putting them in harm's way, knowing that we're gonna take a kid with mental issues that is assaulted, you know, we just got asked the other day by Marion County to take a kid that has over twenty-three assault batteries on staff in other facilities in two different states. Well, we're not taking that kid, like he ain't coming here.
Surprised they told you the truth.
Right, well, yeah, he was, he was actually a supervisor from another facility that was like, they, he, half his staff had to testify against this kid for different behaviors, but that's what we're getting, and you know, even, you know, you pay somebody twenty dollars an hour, there's no guarantee that, I mean, I don't wanna get this money for fifty dollars an hour.
You talked, you talked about Cat County, but sixty-eight beds are down to six because of staffing issues.
That number might be off, I don't know the exact number.
But even if it was thirty, it's half of what, or whatever it was, half of whatever it was, my, my point here is, is how much an hour do they pay?
Right, a lot.
And they can't get people.
Right.
So twenty dollars an hour, twenty dollars an hour is not gonna make, 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 wave the magic wand, pay twenty dollars an hour, and that means you, they're not gonna be here tomorrow knocking our door down for these jobs. So the staffing issue is still gonna be there, whether you put a part-time closure on it, or you make a part-time or a full-time closure on it, and I'm just to the point now is, is we're bleeding red here and continue to bleed red, you can put a Band-Aid on it, you might stem the flow, but you're still bleeding red.
Since COVID, as you mentioned, since you opened up after COVID, what's the percentage on Ross Common County kids?
I didn't bring it with me, I should have. It, it's usually, um, I wanna say, like, I think we were at like three point one kids a month. Um, a lot of them were, would be a, a weekend type thing where he was, you know, we've just had a kid, I think, for close to thirty days, so, and it's not, it's not that they don't wanna send him here, it's just you gotta look at the population of Ross Common County, we don't have the kids here, I mean, we still have two large Class D schools in this county. Now we're borderline Class D schools in both of them, so the, the kids aren't here like they used to be, the population obviously isn't the same either, but that's why we house out-of-county kids is where we were making our money.
Right, you talk about kids, I just talked to somebody, said that there's fifty-five seniors at Ross Common High School. You know, Mike went there and he went with my kids, and there was a hundred and twenty-five around. Well, one, okay, yours was a hundred and four, and that wasn't that long ago. But anyway, like Mike says, so.
Not long ago for Jake.
Mr. Melbourne.
Still like Jody's idea. At the end of the day, I really wanna ask you guys, what, what do you think we need to do? I, I need to hear from you guys to hear, this is, this is your job, this is what you do for a living.
State is not gonna allow kids into their rooms. Not going to allow without a special form to put handcuffs on you, even if we're trying. I think the state is part of it.
Okay, I, see, I didn't know that.
That's why we're here to discuss it, Mark. So, um-
What, what else?
I think, I think, okay, go ahead. Want somebody else? Go ahead, do you have something else? Mike and Cheryl?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think what we want is just a decision to move on, get our people. Um, ever it is, it is, but we just, we gotta move on, one way or another. If we're gonna, you know, raise rates and try to hire people, then we'll give that all our all. If we're gonna close, then we got a lot of stuff we gotta figure out what to do with, and people and kids and, oh.
Well, knowing what you just said about what's gonna be changed on November first, I think it's it doesn't help the situation.
The state doesn't help at all.
The state's not helping at all.
No, and I, I agree with that too, and I think as undersheriflow said too, I mean, we're, we're not getting rescued by the state here. It's not happening. The tenor of juvenile justice has always been rehabilitation rather than punitive anyway, um, and we are very, very much in that realm and talk about unfunded mandates and this, that, and the other, so we're blue in the face, right, but, um, I, from my perspective, and obviously I'm at odds with pretty much the entire board here, because I, and from my perspective, I don't care about money. Like, that's the last, I care about services for the youth, and I understand that your jobs are much different than my job is, and that's probably why. Um, so I, that's, that's pretty much all I have to say, is I agree with what Mike and Cheryl and undersheriflow have said, that there's no magic happening from the state, I just can't stress enough how much of a loss that's going to be.
Oh, boy, definitely it's gonna be a loss, it's gonna be a loss. It's gonna be, I, I, it's gonna be a loss to lose all these people.
Not on the other side.
I, if, if there was a way to do it, I would be the, I would be the biggest cheerleader on this thing, but I just, financially, I just don't see it.
And fiscally, I, I-
Fiscally being, and that's what our jobs are as commissioners, are to be fiscally responsible. Because we've also got other employees that work for this county too.
And I can't guarantee you that you're gonna get ten kids a month in juvenile detention to fund it from my county, because I only put kids in there that need it, and I can't tell you that that's, that amount's going to change, you know, so, um, I understand.
That's what you're supposed to do, and we, and we appreciate that.
Right, right, I appreciate the input here.
Sure, see that, I agree with you, this is a huge blow to the community.
I think all of us agree with that, Mark.
It is about money, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't always be about money, and, and I'm kinda driven by the fact that we have a responsibility to those youth. If, uh, the magic, if we had magic dust to throw, if we offered Jody's idea, that we went and tried to bump it to three seventy-nine, twenty, I'm just throwing a number out. Could we put together, potentially put together a plan that we could review in thirty-five or forty days that would possibly open an opportunity for us to be able to keep the facility open?
To keep the facility open to house other counties' youth, is that what you wanna do?
Looking for, I wanna, I wanna see, I wanna make sure we challenge and look at all ideas. We just don't, I don't think we're rationally saying no, but when I saw the thing, possible closure, that's, that's pretty, it's pretty strong. I wanna see if there's a possibility of keeping the thing open if we did one more review.
You're, 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 you're looking to keep it open to house other counties' youth?
Well, you, you couldn't, if you were going to do a temporary closure, bringing my, that's what I'm bringing my fiscalness back in. The first caveat would be, you would essentially still need to lay everybody off with the exception of two employees.
Okay.
Um, the other thought process of that is, you would only wanna give it thirty days. Um, the fourth is that those employees would need to still be supported and eligible to accept other jobs within the county or outside of the county. Um, you could not lay an expectation basically on Cheryl and Michael, that if they were, if Michael was offered a job with the state of Michigan as a fire investigator full-time, that, sorry, I was, I, I know I was coming up with a dream job for you, um, that he doesn't go, like, I, I, you know, I don't want, I don't want you guys to be, like Mike said, they want a decision, um, they don't want to be hanging in the wind, they need to know what they're doing, um.
Hanging people's lives in the wind.
And that is, and that to me would be-
So just, if you close for thirty days, okay, and the hypothetical theory is to hire people and train, okay? I can't, we may not even be able to do that in thirty, because of the, the cycle of the training.
They're already short-staffed now.
Yeah, that'd be great, that we could hire ten people, or, you know, mix them part-time, full-time, get them trained in, in hands-on training, um, which is another issue, we have to hire a company from Illinois. Used to pay the sheriff's department to come over and train our people on their stuff, which was a, was great, you know, they made a little money, got good training. They changed that, so the cycle of training now, you know, I have to send fifteen of us to Illinois or Nevada for a training. So, and in the meantime, you know, those other staff are gonna be gone, because I'm gonna wait around for a what-if scenario, I mean, I'm certainly, I, um, because there's no guarantee that we're gonna get ten people in there or six to start staffing. They need to be trained and ready to go, and we can't do on-the-job training if we don't have kids.
Right. Cheryl, you made mention that there's a, there's a, some staff that are looking at leaving by October. Do you have a date on that? I mean, do you, I mean, do you have like a weekend ending the seventh or the weekend ending the fourteenth or something like that?
I feel like it was actually the end of September they were leaving, wasn't that, we didn't have an exact date.
Yeah, I'm not, well, I'm looking at my calendar, and, and we, we as commissioners gotta come to some kind of consensus here on, on what we're gonna do, because we're bleeding red big time. Um, this is nothing any of us want to do. Nobody in this room, I mean, there ain't one person. Um, so, I guess I'm looking at my fellow commissioners, have you guys got anything in mind? We need, we need, we need to, we need to make some kind of a decision today. Um, I think the question is, is, at this point, is, is whether we're, when we're gonna close, there needs to be a motion on when we're gonna close, we need to put a date on it, or like Mr. Melbourne is talking about, that we, that we put a forty-five-day extension on it. I'm only one person.
I like the idea of the forty-five-day extension.
I've got a motion if you would like to hear one. Move to close the Ross Common County Juvenile Detention Center with the last open, last day open for services will be October second, twenty twenty-two. Closure is based on the lack of staffing, increase in state mandates, and financial hardship beginning with the twenty twenty COVID quarantine.
Hey, any further discussion on that from anybody?
Yeah, you know, I came in here wanting to keep the center open, but it sounds like we're not looking at it. If I'm gonna support your motion, closing the center, I recommend it.
Okay, or, Tim, are you making that into a formal motion?
Yes.
Number seven.
Oh, excuse me, yep, okay. Any other further discussion, Mr. Melbourne?
I, I still support Jody's idea. I'm gonna vote no, because I think we could have exhausted off, I think if we, we took that as an idea, it's a possibility, and Mr. Kline's comment as far as serving youth, I appreciate that comment, so I'm gonna vote no. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any other further comment from anybody? Hey, Mr. Buckentaller, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Buckent- Motion's been made by Commissioner Muckenthaler.
Writing it down. Okay.
Because this is important. I wanna make sure that I read this into the record, okay?
If I could, since we're waiting, I think it's, I think the comment is, but it's always, it's not always about money. That, that struck, that struck a hard nerve. Thanks for your comments, sir.
Okay. Mr. Muckenthaler has made the motion to move to close the Ross Common County Juvenile Detention Center with the last day open for services to be October second, twenty twenty-two. Closure is based on lack of staffing. Increase in state mandates and financial hardships beginning with the twenty twenty-two COVID quarantine. And the second was, uh, Commissioner Russo. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Well, wait a minute. She's not back yet.
Since we have a moment, Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank you all for being here today and presenting, and presenting to the board.
I wanna thank them.
The toughie.
So this is tough on everybody. Like I said, there's nobody here that. Okay. You guys have been great. So with that, um, I guess I read, okay, Michelle, I read it in to the record. Motion was made by Commissioner Muckenthaler, seconded by Commissioner Russo. Move to close the Ross Common County Juvenile Detention Center with the last day open for services to be October second, twenty twenty-two. Closure based on lack of staffing, increase in state mandates and financial hardships beginning with the twenty twenty-two COVID quarantine. Any further discussions from any commissioner at this time? Hearing or seeing none, roll call.
Melbourne.
No.
Snyder.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Muckenthaler.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And that was one of the toughest votes I've ever done in fifteen years. Um. Okay. Any other further public comment from anybody at this time? Yes.
This isn't to you guys. Sorry, I know public comment's supposed to be. Um, Cheryl and Michael, I, um. You two have poured your hearts into that place and I just wanted to thank you because you have stayed. And you have tried everything. Um, and it has broke my heart to watch you two tell me that you don't know what else to do. Um, I, I know, um, that I have been blessed to have both of you over there. Um. And God, I hope there's something here for both of you. Um. But if anybody you know. Anybody else hires you, they are, they are lucky. So I am sorry.
Personally, I've gotten to know the both of you so well. You're like personal friends. And when Cheryl come into the office, Jody's office two weeks ago. And it was really tough to see Cheryl, what you were personally going through, the anguish of this because, and, and you, and you knew in, in talking to me or if you're talking to any of these other commissioners. We all, everybody did what they could do. You guys. I, I, I don't, I tell you what, your expertise and your professionalism has been the best I've ever seen. Anything I can personally, I can do to help you guys, I will. Right? Any other public comment at this time, please? All right, item number nine, adjournment, please.
Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Melbourne, seconded by Commissioner Russo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.